Good evening, welcome to the Brookfield Board of Selectmen's Meeting for Tuesday, March 15th. I ask everyone to please rise to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
I will entertain a motion to approve the paving warrant for March 15th, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to acknowledge the Murdock Public Library Board of Trustee Minutes for 2/22/16.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Announcements, the Historical Commission is seeking members to serve on their board. It's a good opportunity for residents interested in the town's heritage and preserving its rich history. Those wishing to serve should send a letter of interest to selectmen@brookfieldma.us or simply call our office at (508) 867-2930, extension 10. Lovely Karen will answer your call and forward it to the proper place. Mr. Wallenin, District 8 to Senator Ann Goby will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall, this building, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., Wednesday, March 16th. That would be tomorrow. All are welcome. Any other announcements?
Yep, I have one, Steve, that on April the 10th, on the afternoon at noon time at the Brookfield Congregational Church, there will be an organizational meeting of the different churches, we're, including the Catholics, by the way, where we're going to be talking about the first church service that was held on Foster Hill on the anniversary coming up on October the 17th.
And that's Sunday?
Sunday, April 10th, at noon time, right after our coffee hour, but noon time, at the Brookfield Congregational Church, North Brookfield, West Brookfield, Brookfield Unitarian Congregational will be part of it. We'll be reaching out to the historical societies and commissions as well to make sure that they're aware of what we're trying to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you maybe do up something small for me and maybe I could get that in our church bulletin?
I would definitely do that.
Yeah, if you want to do it.
I'll pop you an email.
Yeah, okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
You have to wake up on time, though. Hour mess you up yet?
We're fine.
You're fine?
Yeah, we're good.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, anybody wish to address the board this evening? Hearing none, on to the agenda, quick meeting. Item number one, 16 East Main Street driveway. Mr. Chafee and Mr. Holcraft, if you could join us at the table, please?
Yep. And I have some-
You don't want to join us?
I'm glad.
Well, it's kind of hard, so I do have some documents that I would like to review, and I only have two copies because I'd like to have these gentlemen review these documents together. Unless David wants me to do something like this. Okay?
So, this is for us two? The two of us to do?
This is only one document?
Yeah.
Herb, come on over, just so that you can try and see what's going on. So, the first picture, I'll put it up here to the screen so that the screen can see, is a picture of 16 East Main Street, and David, yes, it looks beautiful. All right? No question.
Where are my images just?
Well, we're going to thumb through them in a second.
Oh, are you just saying?
Yeah. So, what we have is, we have 16 East Main Street, and David moved a house there, and David, it does, if that, if you hadn't heard it before, you hear it here on camera, that it looked beautiful on the morning of March 9th and March 11th. So, that's the, that's the first part. That the, the second document, you'd be familiar with, both you and Mr. Chafee, that on October the 30th, a letter was received by you, or provided by you, by the Highway Department, that your driveway was accepted for, and approved for taring.
Yeah.
All right? That sometime earlier this spring, a berm was created in the driveway to direct water. This is a picture of the driveway as it stood on the morning of March 11th, where you can see that that berm was directing water flow partway up your driveway, and what we talked about-
That was put there.
Yes, I want to be clear, that driveway, that was put there. What was approved and accepted here was changed after that approval.
Yeah.
Your driveway was accepted to be tarred-
Right.
-on October the 27th, or 30th, by correspondence.
Right.
Right? And so, this is, however, the condition of your driveway today.
No, I spread it back out.
Okay, well, so be it.
The Highway put that there.
That's correct. Yeah, we're being very clear.
Yeah.
The next page is a diagram that Mr. Holcraft provided a week ago, on the 8th, where you proposed-
Yep.
...a swale in this area, and that we agreed that the town would, in fact, correct the driveway. That it would, that this would be-
I smoothed that out for the finale.
And we'll talk more about that in a second, but that was, that was an approval, that was an agreement between this board and yourself on, on March the 8th.
That sounds about right.
Okay? In the next document, what we have is, we have a hillside, and again, this is the document. We have a hillside that slopes down. There was a frog pond placed there by probably the meanses at some point, up behind the houses to the-
Behind Wilson's house.
Yes, behind the Wilson's house. There was a frog pond created. With the way they left the frog pond, what will happen in high water events, it will drain down along the stone wall. And that's the, the reality is, you, as you putting the house there, you became the cork in the, in the stopper as far as where that water was to be flowing. So, the difficulty of the sketch that you provided, David, was that you've got some, you've got a limited site, situation where you've got water running along the stone wall, and what happens in-
Because it will interfere.
I'll point it out here, yes. What happens is, is a blue flag, there's a blue flag, and what that denotes is where the water main goes through, and that's where your shut-off is. And so, what happens is, you get limited as to what you can do. You, you can't compromise the bank, unfortunately.
You can't go over there, let's go over there.
Exactly. So-
Close to it.
The other, the other piece of this, and part of the struggle, is that you've got a culvert opening some 14 feet-
Yeah.
-from the edge of the driveway.
Right.
So, when Herb and I went up there to talk about what solutions would be, the conversation of the swale, the idea of the swale that you had was a little bit further to the east or to the right of water. I usually work practical, but what could be?
Well, I want to keep it close to the driveway.
Okay.
I wasn't sure where the shut-off was until I went up there.
Yep, so again, it's clear where the shut-off is now, how not to compromise it. So, given that, what Herb's suggestion was, and you've heard it before, so, and we've talked about it.
Yeah.
But the idea was, where you have the culvert opening here, the idea, if, if possible, to have your culvert opening here, to kind of minimize the amount of swale that you would have to have. So, the idea would be, instead of the opening being here, the opening being here.
No, I don't think that's good at all. Now, you're going to tear the whole driveway apart.
No, no, no.
I mean, if the Highway wants to do it, that's fine with me, but I had this approved, and now, now, now it's a whole different picture again now.
Well, Dave, what, what he's saying is-
I know what he's saying, he should take the pipe out, is what he's saying.
No, not, not at all. What he's saying is to, what's going on is, the water's coming right down the driveway.
Right, and that's why I suggested the swale.
But this is, this, this still is, this still is a swale, but the swale's farther down, basically opening the culvert a little bit more, because you can't put that swale over by that water main shut-off.
Right, so you want to run down the stone wall and come down the edge of the driveway, come into-
Well, it has nothing to do with the driveway, it's, it's over here.
The edge of the driveway.
Yeah, so-
The same, yeah.
If you want to go to the next page, I actually demonstrated that. So, what, what the, the first thought was, is to move the opening, this five feet. It is, from this point to the, a perpendicular line along that driveway is 14 feet. I'm not asking you to move your opening 14 feet. What I'm, what we're suggesting to you is that that opening be moved five to seven feet from its current area. The idea would be to pick up more of the hillside as you have the swale. Again, that's the, the recommendation.
Same thing I suggested.
The only, the only difference between your sketch and this sketch is I'm starting at a point after the stone wall.
Well, I started up here where the water comes out.
Yeah.
And you want to come down here?
Oh, we're talking the same thing.
Yeah.
What I'm, I don't want to draw a picture, I'm on the diagram, because it's a good diagram. What I'm thinking, David, is that, well, but-
It's like you got it, you got it coming down on this.
Yes.
That's what I want to do.
And, and-
But I got to take, take some of these rocks out so it goes in there easier.
That's correct. So, if-
And I got to dig down a little bit, not too much, but-
But, but if you can do that, is that possible, that you can do that?
Well, what about with the pipe, is the pipe going to stay there?
We, oh yeah, the pipe's going to stay there, that's the state.
You're basically just making a bigger ditch for the water to come into.
Right.
It's, it's not altering anything, it's just digging more. When we went down there and met, where he approved it, he was more focused on-
On the other side.
On the other side.
Right.
But what's happening is, through actual events, he's noticing it's coming on the other side, so that has to be bigger.
Yeah, what you, what you had, David, in the, in the earlier diagram, is you had the pipe opening here, the pipe opening-
Yeah, that's just a rough, right.
Right, that totally understood. And so, what I did is, I made sure I understood where the opening was.
Yeah, exactly.
And the opening, and the opening's just to this scale.
Right.
Just a little further up. What we're suggesting is, that if we start at an apex here at the driveway as you have it.
Right, okay.
Right, yeah, you and I agree here, no problem here. And I'm saying, if you want to start to create your swale here.
Well, I want to start right up here.
Well, and at the stone wall, you, you want to be coming, coming away from the stone wall, pitching toward the pipe.
I just have to make sure, understand this one.
It breaks away from the stone wall.
Did you want to write on these?
No, I agree.
If it breaks away from the stone wall, that's why I want to come down and fall straight down.
Yeah, and again, you're doing this, I just moved your pipe over here, because it's not exactly there, because the opening is 14 feet, I'm suggesting that you, that you move this thing back five feet, five of the 14, to, to, again, catch-
Yeah, we want to, we want to angle it down, is what you're saying.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, too. That's, that's, that's a rough sketch that I gave you.
Yes, it's right there, where we scratched them.
Right.
All right, so-
But I don't want to go down too deep either.
No, 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 no.
I just want to swale it and put some gravel or something in there, stones or something.
And will you do that?
Yeah.
All right. So, given that David will put a swale there, we'll move to-
Well, my desire is that Dave understands exactly what's being requested. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a big thing to ask for. I think the history of the water coming off there, it needs to be done, and it, to me, it's just taking your design and just bringing it down close to the road.
Well, that's what I was going to do.
Yep.
I just gave you a rough sketch that night, so you have something.
Yeah, and I, and I went out and took some pictures, and I understood where the dimensions were, so I'm a little smarter than I was at that conversation. So, given that, that we, if David does that, what Herb's agreed to, smile Herb, what you've agreed to is, if you put your swale there, right, and again, it's starting at the stone, and, and again, we just talked about where, this is just kind of a picture, that Herb would come in with a machine and flatten that back to the acceptable, I put quotes around that, position that it was in on October 27th. Is that, is that a meaningful?
Well, if he puts it back to, you know, what's suitable for the driveway and for what he wants, I'll be happy.
All right.
I already smoothed it out with my plow truck.
We understand that.
So, I could get up there.
Yes. So, given that, the other thing that Herb will do is that at the bottom of the driveway, one of the other detriments is that the other end of your culvert's over here.
On the left.
Yep, this is the left side of the driveway, a little further down. Left side of the driveway, there's a pile of stones over the top of the culvert.
Right.
And what Herb will do, when he finishes smoothing that-
An angula in it.
An angula, we're going to get rid of this, so that the water's going to come down.
That's fine.
All right?
My contractor put it there, he thought it'd be a little better, you know?
And the only thing, thing that I have from the time that I was looking at the water flow, is that what will, what happens unfortunately, because of these stones, it's driving some of the water off to the street.
Yeah, well, we had it swaled down to come from top.
Yeah.
You have to get it all.
Well, but we're going to make an attempt to-
That's fine, that's fine.
So, what you-
That's fine, it's good with me. Now, how do you want that swale, though? I want to make sure, because I'm not going to do this 10 times like I did the driveway.
One time. You're going, we've asked, and if you agree, to move the opening five feet from its current opening.
Okay, so what's that mean? What's that mean?
I think you dig down here, right over the top of that culvert, and, and make an opening in the top of that culvert, in the area that it is, is in today, and the, and the dimension is about five feet. And, and the reason I'm suggesting that is to get-
You want to put an opening in the top of the pipe.
Yep.
That's okay with that, Herb, doing that?
I prefer not the opening at the top of the pipe, I prefer the pipe moved, be brought back where it belongs, so the swale and the water goes into the pipe.
So, it's cut, it's cut.
Yeah, so it's flush.
So, it's flush.
So, now, that's what I'm, that's where I just asked you five minutes ago, you talked about moving the pipe.
A portion of the pipe, I'm not talking about the whole pipe. Maybe that's the confusion, a portion, I'm asking that a portion be done, and to, to the earlier point. The idea is that you may be able to leave it where it is, as long as you can get this water flow to get there.
To go into the ditch.
Because water doesn't run uphill, right?
No.
So, that was the point. And so, by moving it back, you can get it to go downhill, as you want it to do off that side of the driveway.
Because if the swale's into the driveway, in the end of the pipes up here-
Well, we'd have to come down at an angle.
It's-
Yeah.
No, no, I'm not saying to go straight, I'm talking about coming down in gradual flow.
Yeah, again, to, to your-
Like you're doing here.
Yes, and, and again, Herb's point is, this is a slight uphill, and so, what you want to do is, as you make your swale, you don't want it running uphill.
I understand that.
All right, so that was the idea of moving this thing back a few feet. And again, as you're doing your swale, if you do that, you, you're going to get a feel for where that wants to be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I only want to do this once, so I mean, if he wants to work with me and, and do some, maybe bring it back on to help remove some of the stones, and then I'll get in there and I'll cut the thing with the saws off, the pipe out, I mean, we could do that, too.
Okay.
And that would minimize-
What you're talking-
-tearing the whole thing up, and, you know, keep everyone happy, I mean, I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
If he, if he wants to, you know, help out a little bit. That's up to, you know, that's up to you guys.
Well, where I was headed was, if, if you worked this way, Herb would walk, work the driveway, as he agreed.
Yeah, so it's suitable to, to what he wants.
To both, to both parties. Herb, what do you think?
I don't have a problem with that.
I'm fighting my town, how's that?
Okay.
Why is that? If I'm willing to work with you, you got to work with me, trying to solve, trying to solve a problem together.
The Highway Department issued a driveway cut for you.
Mm-hmm.
You need to put the driveway cut in according to what we asked you to do. It's not up to the town to come up and correct your problems with, where you put in your driveway cut. You need to take and do it, correct, and it shouldn't be the town's responsibility to do that for you.
Okay, now I'm, okay. Now, I'm going to give you my side. I had you up there, I had a contractor do the driveway, you were up there three times, you told me to remove the rocks, do this, do that, I did what you said, you were happy with it, and then Steve came on, and you said, I want this, this, and this done on the other side, so I did that. Then you came back again with Steve, the three of us, and you said, that's good, that's what I want. And then you sent the letter-
We do.
-saying that it's all set for paving. Now, you want me to change it again, so if we want to change it, we got to work together.
Hey.
So, I'm asking you to work with me, if that's, if you're not happy.
The driveway permit, that you agreed to, okay? Call school one length of pipe in that driveway crossing.
What, Herb, what does N12 mean?
It's the grade of the pipe. The length of, one length of pipe, it's 20 feet wide.
And, and again, this is the, this is a copy of the permit.
That's what I'm looking at right now.
Yeah, and what, what-
Well, we had, we, we put a 40-foot pipe in there instead of a 20-foot, because we're coming off that hill, onto that road, and it's for safety reasons. It has a nice, nice area coming out.
Right.
And let me finish.
Yep.
All right.
I had you, I had you and the selectmen up there to go over this, and it got approved, and everybody was happy. Now, we want to change the whole process again. Yeah, it says one length, I put 40 feet in, okay? So, it's 40, it's 40 feet wide, it's at the mouth, oh.
And that's, that's where it is, 40 feet, from here to the other end is 40 feet.
Right, from the pipe, the pipe sticks out beyond the driveway, okay?
The reason that you had to put 40 feet in is in order to get the house over that location. That's the reason that you did. You agreed verbally with me that you would take and put one length of pipe in and remove the second one.
No, the pipes, the pipes were never put in until after the house was in place. We never had that discussion. The pipes were not put in until after the house is up there. Then I came, then I came for a formal permit after, I asked you what type of pipe you wanted to be, and then I put the pipes in after. Because we had, remember when I didn't have anything done? We didn't have the pipes in, it got all icy there. Remember, it filled up with ice, you had to come up with a backhoe.
All right, we're going down, we're just going down, he said, she said, it's not going to resolve anything.
Well, we're trying, no, we're trying to rectify this, rationally, with some common sense.
Oh, 100%.
And I'm trying to work with him, and I'm asking him to work with me.
But the pipe's in-
The pipe's in, and everybody was happy with it. Now, you want me to do the thing over again?
And the desire-
For the fourth time.
And the desire is what, I want to say punk, but that's disrespectful, Mr. Snyder is recommending.
I'm making a suggestion, only, only that, that the idea was, is to, to take the swale as you had suggested. And now, I've lost, I've lost the swale, guys.
He's on top.
Oh, yeah, all right, here we are.
I, well, that's, that's clear, that's understandable. The point with discussing is, if he wants to work with me on the end with the rocks, and then I'll get in there with the saws on, I'll cut the pipe.
What, what Dave's asking for, Clarence, is that Herb goes down with a backhoe and digs what needs to be dug.
Oh, and, and I'm thinking-
I'm asking for some cooperation, you seen that I had done this, and it was approved, and now you're undoing it.
Dave, it has not been approved.
It was all set for paving.
That is correct.
And you even said that at a department head meeting, which should not even have been brought up at a department head meeting. So, now I'm trying, now you're not happy with it, so now I'm trying to work with you to do it again, for the fourth time.
It's not up to the town to take and do your job, Dave, I'm sorry.
My job was done and the town approved it, you approved it, the selectmen were there.
So, we're a little smarter today than we were then.
Right, so what are you going to do? Every time somebody does something, oh, we don't like that, take it back now.
So, so what-
You just don't, that's not the way it works.
So, so let's, let's, let's leave it this way, suggestion.
I'm asking for a little cooperation from the town now, if the town's not happy, okay, now you're going to work with me to make it so you're happy.
So, exactly.
The next person down the line is going to want to say that, so on and so forth.
This is, no, this is a unique, no, this is a different situation.
No, no, okay, Herb, Herb, I'm going to-
I'm just trying to be very-
So, so what we-
I understand where you're coming from.
Straight ahead.
So, what we have in the future is a new curb cut set of rules, where there is now a bond that has to be placed in, in place, so that we won't have a-
Has that been approved by a town meeting yet?
That's been approved by Attorney General since time now. Mike Siri, has sent that off and it's been approved and sent back.
But doesn't it, didn't we have an issue that it wasn't approved at a town meeting?
It was already approved at town meeting, Mike, that's all that paperwork.
Mike never sent it in?
Mike did send it in.
But that's why there was a lag between, because there was a lag between a town meeting vote or something, wasn't there?
Yeah, from years ago, Mike found a big word consented it, and he got it all squared away with the Attorney General.
So, we're good now?
Yes, we have.
So, what we have now is teeth, that we had, would have had a bond, so whether approved, accepted, whatever these, the language we want to use-
This was taken care of.
This would have taken care of it, exactly. So, we're not dealing with a future situation, we're now dealing with resolving David's situation, and I think that, I think that the point, and what I would recommend then, is to leave the, leave the pipe exactly where it is, and to create the swale as you've talked about creating. And again, the only difference between your earlier sketch and what I'm, what we've just now scratched here, is that you'd be starting the other end of the swale at the end of the stone wall, because we know that this water doesn't want to trace along the stone wall.
Yeah, I'm going to start the swale up here, where it comes out.
Yeah, you're going to start here, you're going to end it here, and then you're going to taper it-
Right.
-somewhere between five to seven feet in the other direction, to the east, and so-
So, it picks up.
Right, so should, should there be an issue with it in the future, then that would be the only thing, is that you need to get, make sure that that water is, in fact, flowing into the culvert.
Well, yeah, if we make the swale, it's all downhill.
Right, so I think that-
I just got to, I just got to make the swale, just so it directs down into the ditch.
So-
I mean, that's pretty-
Yeah, so what, 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 what's being suggested is, that as you agreed on March the 8th to create the swale-
Right.
And we've described a further description of that-
Closer to the driveway.
Closer to the driveway.
That's what I want.
That you will do that.
Right.
And what, what I'm suggesting is the highway superintendent will do is he will pick up from the edge of your swale down to the other end of the culvert. And that's what Herb's gonna pick up. Do we agree?
Those stones and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, the stones we, you pointed out to me.
Well, you wanna remove them so the, so it's.
Tapered.
Going into the ditch.
Yeah, exactly. At, at the other end of.
I believe, that's, that's another thing I've had asked. You were there, I've asked those stones to be removed numerous times.
I thought he did, no?
We did and you, you.
They're higher than the road.
On the opposite.
Down the low end of the driveway.
Yeah, that, so.
I've asked to have those removed.
So, but, but what we've agreed, Herb.
I'm just trying to keep going back and forth on this one driveway.
Well, we, that's why Steve was there. In the third time, fourth time, whatever, he came up there, he was there. You said everything was fine. I moved stones and rocks and I did this, I angled it, so you were fine with it. Now you're not fine with it.
It didn't, it has not worked with the drain that we've had. It has washed out part of your driveway, it washed it out into the roadway. You need to do something different, Dave.
Yep, and, and again.
And I'm just, I don't know what to do and I don't think it's Mike, the town's responsibility to go out there and correct.
But, but as we talked earlier, you're, you're.
Not gonna correct the driveway.
No, he's gonna.
You're gonna correct the ditch, which is on the town property. You had a problem on Green Street, water coming out of the house up on Green Street. Did you go over there and do something in front of someone's house?
Yeah, on town property.
Yeah, well, this, this is all town property too.
It's a new driveway, Dave.
There's, I understand that, but you said you don't do things for people. Up on Green Street, that house, that water's been coming out of there for years.
So, so guys.
Why, so is it their fault? And you, you went up there, you went up there and you.
I'm going through Clarence. Clarence has picked up the ball.
Where, where I'm headed is, guys, I'm dealing with sixteen East Main right now.
Okay, but fair is fair. I mean, when he made a statement that he doesn't do things for people, up by six, uh, this, on Green Street.
And, and as a town employee, as a town.
Fair is fair, okay?
Yes. What, what, what Herb has agreed to is that with, with the work of the swale being completed.
He'll pick, he'll pick up from the ditch, the back edge of the ditch back to the, so it's good for him.
I would say edge of the swale, and I want you to shake your head in the right direction.
Edge of which swale?
The, the eastern side or right hand side.
The wall, wall side of the.
High, high side of the driveway, you're gonna pick up at his swale.
Clarence, can I make a recommendation?
Yep.
I see Dave having a different interpretation of what you're having.
Yep.
Can, can, do you feel the same?
Well, what's that?
Can, can, can the three of you meet in the near future and, and point to exactly what needs to happen?
Yep.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Because I don't, it's not gonna get resolved with pictures.
Okay.
It'd be nice if we had a little idea to, um.
Well, then we'll have, we'd have to have a meeting. I, I trust Clarence. Do you trust Clarence, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, you're up there and, and, and he said everything was fine. Is it true or not, too?
It is, but I'm.
Okay, so.
But you understand that water, water, you understand that water from your property is coming onto the road and we have to deal with it.
Everybody's water was coming out of everybody's property. Water goes downhill, not up.
But we wanna remedy this situation.
And I changed the driveway three times to accommodate what he wanted done and I did it and I kept doing it and he finally said, okay, now, now it's, now we're gonna change the whole thing again.
Well, I don't think you're changing the driveway. I think you're just, in my opinion, interpretation of this.
You're changing the end of the pipe. So I'm willing, but I'm still willing to, I'm still willing to work with the town and Herb.
Making a different swale. So can you guys?
If he wants to work with me, to give this resolved. That's all that matters.
Can you three make, make a date right now?
I'm looking forward to it.
Can you do, make a date right now?
I'm all for it. I mean, I haven't had a good date in a long time. What's good for you guys?
I'm pretty flexible. I mean, tell, tell me something and then I'll tell you.
Later this week? Do something, what's today? Today's Tuesday, Thursday? Thursday morning, ten o'clock? Unless you're doing trees, that's fine with me, unless it's doing that.
It'll be raining probably, are we good?
That would be good. There we go. Oh, gonna get rid of it by then? All right, so Thursday, Thursday, ten o'clock.
Thursday, ten AM.
It's ten.
Good.
Now, we're just, we're gonna have any special specifications on how we're gonna do the swale?
That's you. You, you signed up, you signed up to that?
Yeah, but I saw it's too small, it's not deep enough, it's this, you gotta have special rocks, the rocks aren't the right size. See where I'm going? I don't wanna hear that, cause that's what happened with the driveway.
Here's, here's the, here's the line, David. So we're gonna pick a point here.
We're gonna start the swale over here.
You're doing that, and then the other side of the swale is here.
Yes.
The mound wants to be here.
Right.
And we will, we will work that. The, the, I think the only objection that we have at this point is the location of the culvert opening. Because we, it can't be too far up.
Well, that's, well, that's something Herb can work on, that what he wants to do at the end.
I would, I would recommend bringing a can of spray paint.
Yep.
Marker paint, just mark out exactly what needs to be done.
Yeah, what he wants to do at the end is, is okay with me.
Now, were you gonna have your contractor do this work for you?
I don't know.
Cause I was just gonna.
It's not a big to do, but that's why I don't know how the swale's gonna be.
The only thing I was just gonna suggest, Dave, if you were gonna have your contractor come up and do it, maybe you could get him to come down too for that meeting at ten o'clock.
I don't know if he, I don't know if I'm gonna do it or he's gonna do it.
It's just a suggestion.
This is a lot of work.
But I had him do the driveway. And the guy knows what he's doing and then, and then Herb was not happy with it and I changed it and then he wanted to change again. I'm not gonna go there now.
Well, that's why.
And I'm still willing to work with the town, but I'm not gonna go through this bunch of, you know, who we are wanting to work.
All right, so Thursday, ten AM, and I, I agree that's a very good idea with.
Well, if we come up there, then we can.
If you're gonna have someone do it, have them come with you, so they have a.
That's a good idea.
Can I highly make a recommendation on that swale so we don't have issues?
That's what I'm asking for.
It should be a paved swale so it stays there and it don't wash.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about stones, so it's not like it's a high water flushing out, it just trickles down, you know?
No, that water does not trickle down.
Well, it's a little more.
That's why we wash the driveway out in a matter of hour or two.
It's not, it's a little more than trickles, but it doesn't come down with a, it's not a roaring thing, you know what I'm saying?
Uh, you've got a speci- special circumstance that you, none, none of the parties were party to from years ago and we now have to deal with it. And we'll do the best we can. And, and again.
And I'm willing to do that, but like I said, I'm not gonna do this four times.
No, and we're not asking you to do it four times. And again, the only. This is.
At the end of the driveway, you had me do it four times.
Let's fix it. Get it done.
Thursday, ten AM?
Thursday, ten.
It's ten.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Dave.
Yep, I'll make, thanks, guys.
Item number two, appointments. I will entertain a motion to appoint Bethany, Bethany Roberts, do you stand any glasses, to the CDBG Advisory Committee with the term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll do, I'll second it.
Do I have any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Clarence needs to sign that. Thank you. Still that back for you, okay? Get it back to Karen.
That goes to my.
He's here tonight, right?
Yep.
Get, probably get him to sign that right away. All right, um, item number three, awarding of the town report printing contract. Uh, four estimates were acquired, um, between one thousand five dollars and ten cents to one thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. The lowest bid was Country Press. And I will entertain a motion to award said bid to Country Press for one thousand five dollars and ten cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number four, Mr. Snyder has, uh, finally put something in our emails that are, uh, that are, it's good news.
Good news.
Absolutely good news.
So I will make, I will let him make the announcement for item number four.
So, what we have, uh, what we have before us is a letter from the Mass Historical Commission. Uh, what would award, be an award for seventeen thousand five hundred to match, uh, like funds from the town for a survey of what we've known to be the campground, such that after July first, hopefully we'll have a contractor in place if we agree that we would, uh, accept this money. Um, such that we would understand what is truly at the campground and that we will end years of hearsay as to what is or isn't. And we can then, uh, make steps to, to move forward.
As Herb's saying, I'm biting my tongue in regards to hearsay, so. I think it's pretty well documented, but anyways.
That, that's good, we've got it.
No, it's, it's, it's excellent. We've worked very hard for this. Clarence has put a lot of time and energy into this, uh, specific grant, so I thank you.
And I, I thank you also. You've put a lot of work in.
Yeah, well, I guess I, I would turn to the Highway Department and say, suggest that the Highway Department and citizens and everybody have, have made this job a lot easier by the work that they've done to make the place look like.
There's too many, there's too many people to like. It's unbelievable.
I know, I walked, my husband and I walked down there, I told you a couple of weeks ago, and what a difference from in the summer when we were down there. The whole place is, it looks so nice, it's been cleaned up.
So what we do.
Now you can find the gate to get out of there, cause you couldn't before, cause it was so overgrown, grown down there.
We do have the issue as we move to town meeting as to additional cleanup monies that will be required to reduce the, what is it, two buildings, Herb? Two left? Three buil- three.
Yeah, I think it's two down there, I saw.
But, but again, it puts us on a path and just, while we get the camera going and we'll talk about it in a minute, what we're getting is, uh, a grant that allows us to understand what's there. What, what the next piece to this will be is an actual planning grant. Uh, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was here earlier in the week. There was some discussion as to whether they had resources to help us or not with this thing. They actually have a preservationist, a planner, preservation planner on their staff. And this gal would be someone who, if you move into the next phase of planning, which you may or may not be able to do, that planner is the kind of resource that you'd be looking.
So did I misinterpret that email? I thought that individual was gonna be able to potentially help us with the survey.
No, they're, they're, uh, what did I say?
The next piece.
They're a preservation planner.
So she can go into the second part, because he said they would like to be involved with it.
Right, so what you'd do is you'd move into a planning phase where you'd actually plan what you're going to do. And then there would be a third phase and monies of, again, matching monies available to the town where you would actually go and it would be bricks, I'll, I'll call it bricks and mortar, but what it would be to take the existing facilities that are there possibly and reconstruct them into a visitor's center, or if you move the past, down a path of a learning center or whatever, you could actually get monies.
That's, that's way down the road.
Way down the road. But again, those are the kinds of places where these different people can help us.
We've been working hard as a town for this for years and I commend everybody.
Just one more step. So, taking this as, as, uh, uh, town property and the like and, and going down that path, there was also a suggestion at our, at our last meeting with respect to, um, the, uh, auction that was going to be held and there was a discussion as to one property to be added to the list of eight. The suggestion from the person organizing that auction is that that would not be, uh, an appropriate.
You're talking about the Finney property?
Yes.
Okay.
That that would not be the appropriate thing to, uh, to do, just because it would muddle up the paperwork later.
No, final.
Okay.
All right, so that's an answer on that. But yes, good news.
Thank you. Uh, item number five, other, the only other that I have is, um, I had given you guys before the meeting the plans for the, um, town hall.
Yep.
If you guys can review these this week, I'd like to set a meeting right now. Is this Friday morning? Okay with you?
It is Friday.
To a walk, to do a walkthrough after you've digested.
You gonna have a slumming from Friday morning?
Well, just to go over the plans for the, the town hall.
What time?
Probably eight AM.
Eight AM, oh, yeah, early.
How about nine?
Nine AM?
We're a little older, you know, we get out of bed a little later. Or others of us don't get out of the barn a little later.
The only reason I'm asking is we're supposed to open up those bids on Friday morning at nine, that is, uh, for the truck, so.
They can accept it the same day.
Well, that's why I was wondering if you could look at that.
Are you opening, is it supposed to open at the Highway Barn or here?
I think it's the Highway Barn, we gotta post it.
But then just run right up, probably a good half hour. All right, so nine AM then?
Nine, yeah, nine is good.
So Karen, can you put that on the agenda as well?
So we're gonna do a walkthrough here?
Well, walkthrough. Uh, it's gonna be posted in the Selectman's Office for opening the meeting and then we'll do a potential walkthrough. I did a walkthrough with, uh, Tantascwa, um, instructor yesterday going over the ADA for, um, the money that was allocated in the grant. Um, he's gonna work on thresholds, a plan for thresholds. We walked the bathroom and we also looked at the, uh, door as well.
So just, and what we can do is talk more about this on Friday for sure, but.
Well, I just wanted to advise you that I had that, that we're getting closer.
Yeah, the one thing that I wanna make sure, now that I've kinda gotten a better feel on handicap access and elevators and all of that stuff, I wanna make sure that we are careful in that we have a project that is this big and it includes an elevator and that there are pieces that the town may choose as early phases of a project. So that we can maximize the grant monies.
Bill Simpson and I, that's, we, from the building municipal facilities planning committee, that's kinda where we're talking.
Exactly.
We were supposed to possibly get two, but it was very early in that committee that we realized we're only gonna get one or the other. And then it was gonna be several years before the town went for the other.
Yep.
But if we can phase it in.
If we can phase it.
Yeah, and that's Tantascwa. I gave him a copy of these plans as well, so.
Okay.
I think the only way to do this is with Tantascwa's help.
Yeah, and I just wanna maximize, we, we need to communicate that this is a big project. Yep, it's gonna take a whole bunch of money, but we can do it in phases such that when we go after that one grant.
And I, I might almost make a, an argument that we have a line item, that we allocate twenty thousand dollars each year. After, you know, it adds, it adds up quick.
I think we should too.
After ten years, you have two hundred thousand on it.
Yep, yep. Good plan.
All right, so.
And if we talk a little bit, you know, more like with the bathroom facilities here.
Well, that's kinda primarily, primarily the discussion.
Well, uh, Mr. Wall, I guess, is willing to meet with us.
Can you invite him to, if he can come in?
He's our plumbing inspector. Mr. Wall is willing to meet with us.
No, he's a good guy, good guy.
And he said he's willing to help too with this.
Well, I, I did speak with him when we converted, when we brought the existing bathroom, we tied it in.
Yeah.
Um, I need to ask him what the code is for this.
Yes.
For toilets. This, this is excessive. I was out in, um, in Taunton this weekend and a huge facility literally had like two, two bathroom stalls. You turn around, lock the door. And that's a commercial building, so.
That's what can get approved.
But the idea, we can't lose, lose the, the thought that we wanna get the second floor done as well, so.
This building is.
And we, we don't want bathrooms upstairs, yada, yada.
Well, there's no real practical place to put them.
Practically, yeah. Cause we just eliminated the whole drain for what's going, the stack pipe that's going up there now.
Yep.
So we're good with Friday morning, nine AM?
Yep.
Okay. Any other other?
I got some paperwork here from, uh, D, uh, Lennard Engineering on the last report they had, they gotta get into the end safety.
For sawmill?
Yeah, for sawmill.
Yep.
Uh, yes. Like to get a signature from you guys or.
Can I take a look at it real quick? So it's an approval of a report?
Yes.
And it looks great.
You've, you've seen it?
I've spent a couple of minutes at the Highway Garage lately, uh, and, and spending a couple of minutes, that's one of the things I've looked at and I think it's excellent.
So this is just a compliance letter stating it was completed successfully?
Yes. Some great, great pictures. It looks great.
So this is gonna be submitted. So entertain a motion to, do we have to sign this, Herb?
It would be nice if you could, Lennard, saying you really didn't have to.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept and sign.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Herb right here at the end?
Yes.
What's today's date?
Today.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Oh, three, one, four.
No.
No, it's a fifteen.
Fifteen, 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 fifteen. St. Patrick's Day.
Today's St. Patrick's Day?
No, seventeen, seventeen, Thursday.
I'm living under a rock. Thank you, sir. Thanks Cindy Forrest as well. Any other other?
Yeah, before he walks out the door, I've spent some time down at the Highway Garage, uh, on the tree thing. And we had the, the original ninety-nine. Herb was able last week to get a couple of days in, uh, starting up on a long hill. Not so, not as far as he wanted to go, but it, but started.
Did you see Bill's email?
Yes.
Of pruning versus removal?
Doing what?
Pruning some trees versus removal of some trees?
Actually, some adding of pruning is the way.
I thought the way that I read it, there was some trees were to be pruned instead of removed.
So I, so where we are is that we had this list of ninety-nine. Herb started down the road and that's where we are today. With now Bill's, no, we've added, my opinion, and again, Cindy was gonna cross check to make sure that I was correct, that that actually adds additional work beyond the ninety-nine, which is fine. I mean, that's.
We're on the road, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that's, but, but it's work that we have to do and we'll get to. But just like last week, Herb got a couple of days in, you might get a day in or two this year. But, but we just gotta keep poking away at it. And, and what, what, uh, Cindy did is reply to the email earlier today. The other thing that's happened is some of these tags that were nailed on have disappeared, which doesn't make his job any easier. So what we've asked Bill to do is come back through with another marking mechanism such that, because it's gonna take a while to get ninety-nine trees if it took two days to get five. So it's gonna be a while. So they have to be accurately marked or suitably marked such that the, the markings can stay there so we can get to them.
So I thought I saw in the email that he would do a ride around with you, a drive by?
Yeah.
Well, drive by, a ride around.
He hasn't talked to me since that meeting, so.
But the email that I saw said that he would drive around, scrub with a can of marker paint and go to town.
Well, and again, we're asking him to go marker paint and go around, but.
Well, wouldn't it be better if he has the time to get in a truck with somebody and?
I'll go, I'll go with him if we have to.
Well, you're not the one that's gonna be cutting them. Herb's gonna be cutting them.
Right, but again, I.
Or Donnie or.
Well, it's, it's just, it's, it's more, he's marked some trees and it's just to take, rather than the, the ribbons, cause the ribbons fall off, to, to go ahead and take.
And believe it or not, some homeowners do pull ribbons off.
Exactly, so let's make it permanent.
There, there was, there was a tree that he did have marked on one of the roads and I looked at it and I questioned to cut the tree down or whatever. And the homeowners come out and question it and everything else. We couldn't find anything wrong with the tree. I mean, you physically couldn't find.
Was that part of the hearing?
Yeah, it was.
So anyway.
And I, I told the homeowners, I'm refusing to cut it down because I don't see any problem with the tree. There's no rot, there's no cracks, there's nothing to the tree. Except for it leans a little bit toward the road.
That's maybe where a drive around with them might help.
Yeah. Well, for, for now, it's like, let's keep working down Long Hill. Ninety-nine to go.
But the recommendation was there to tag along.
Yep, yep. And, and, and again, as he has time and Herb has time.
Yeah, we're gonna move the best part of the summer, take, trying to take trees down because I'm gonna end up losing the tree guy for the summer, so. You know, we should've been, we should've been cutting trees all along.
Do what we gotta do.
Exactly.
We got so many pasted trees, dead trees in the town and I happened to drive past one today out on Rice Corner Road that I'd missed. And it's a big maple, right in front of somebody's front yard. That's completely dead. I missed it. I'm a hottie, I missed it, but the wind took and, uh, peeled off all the bark, found a lot of it.
That's, that's how you missed it.
Yeah.
So, changing subjects, Webber Road starts when?
Supposed to be starting then next week.
Okay, all right. And then.
I'm gonna be kinda by myself on that one there while the other guys are cutting trees.
Okay. And so then the, uh, what was the other thing? We've got, uh, pardon me, senior moment. There was one, oh, truck. There, there is an email to, to Karen earlier today from the Highway Department related. I, I did not do well several weeks ago when we were talking about trucks and which truck did what and, and we'll have, we need to have a conversation about, uh, the, uh, the stump grinder and, uh, truck reconfigurations.
Yeah, I saw the two, I wrote the two emails.
Well, I just wanna remember that we did allocate money, chapter ninety money for, was it the?
Catch basin truck.
So if we have to rescind, if we have to rescind the motion, just make sure Cindy.
Well, Bruce and I have been looking at the, uh, the truck that we're trying to replace for the plow sand truck. And we're pretty fair, how's that? That we can possibly fix that enough to make it, use it as a catch basin truck, but we have to buy the crane for it. The crane and the cleaner.
And that's chap, that could possibly.
We can get that through chapter ninety money. We've already been approved for thirty of that. And I just gotta confirm that, if, if we can just use that same amount of money, but the catch basin cleaner itself is sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, I think it is. Just a cleaner boom itself. Very expensive.
But a good use of the truck because of its age and where it sits.
Yeah, cause it's all it's gonna be used for is cleaning catch basins.
So, anyway.
I don't know what to do, you know, it's gonna cost ten thousand dollars a year to clean basins, you know?
At least.
At ten thousand dollars a year, in six years' time, you're gonna pay for that, that cleaner.
Do they have any used trucks that the catch basin still works?
I've been having a guy looking for them, and few and fire in between.
You know what I'm saying? Just scrap the truck and grab the base, the catch basin part of it?
That's what's mainly junk on most of them, is the cleaner, 'cause the towns don't maintain them, and the cities don't maintain them. If they run them to the totally junk, they're, they are junk. Matter of fact, there's a town that's close by here, they're getting a new one, and soon as that truck gets traded in, all they're doing is taking a torch to it and cutting it up, because it's that bad. The town shouldn't even be using it right now. That's how bad it is.
All right, we gotta start cleaning our catch basins, so we gotta do what we gotta do.
This, I thought, was a good alternative.
There's over five, there's over five hundred catch basins in the town.
And it's something we have not allotted in the last couple of years, unfortunately.
Well, we thought we had an agreement with East Brookfield.
Totally, totally.
And that's gone completely forever.
They haven't held up there in three years, so.
Have we made another phone call this spring?
I'm not even, I'm not gonna waste my time with the bread at the moment. It's not worthwhile, because they still haven't got a catch basin truck, so what's the sense of-
Oh, they don't even have, I thought they had one.
Yeah, they don't have one.
Just southering out.
What's that?
How's East Brookfield cleaning theirs?
They're not.
So, anyway, I just thought we'd take a minute with Herb, just because we've been busy talking a lot of subjects.
Okay.
All right, and if we need any paperwork for Friday, you can bring that too.
All right, like I said, once the bid's open and everything else, I'll bring the bids up after we go over them and stuff, you know, and, uh, we'll make a recommendation which one it is. I'll go from there.
All right, excellent. Beautiful. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Herb.
Anything else?
No.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What's going on with the reservoir?
What reservoir?
We're selling the reservoir or we're not selling it?
The North Brookfield property?
Yeah.
We were just on the phone with a gentleman yesterday. He's supposed to come in with a deposit. He, he has signed the PNS, we just need the deposit.
Is he gonna buy it? Is he gonna go through with it?
He said yesterday he was. So, that's good timing, that we actually talked to him yesterday.
It's great.
That's good.
But it is what it is. It's, it's li- it's life, you never know.
Yeah.
Well, and, and we do have an alternative, if, that we're gonna go south.
Which I'm about to start pursuing if-
Let me know.
It's getting a little bit too dragged out.
Yep.
But.
That's why I asked, was it gonna drag that out?
Oh, it is dragged out, not getting, it is. But there's, there's good faith there, there's still communication, so.
It's been working out of town, and it's been difficult.
But at least there's a signature, so that's good faith.
They putting money down on it?
No, that's what we're trying to get him in to come in. 'Cause there is in the-
Is that a legal thing, or you do a PNS with no money?
The PNS required a dollar amount, and he didn't supply that when he signed it.
He did?
He did not supply it.
That's why I'm asking, so it's not-
That's, that's why we're trying to get him in to put the deposit down. Any other items?
No.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at six fifty-two.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.